Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Burke, we have a motion, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present. Thank you. We have a forum. We do not have any ceremonial matters this evening, so we'll move on before the confirmation. Mr. Ratlin, do we have any other requests for and submitted for this evening?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to approval of the minutes. And I would ask you all, does my microphone on? I can use my great long voice if I have to. Thank you. Testing. Thank you. That's better. If we could ask you to please silence or mute your cellphones at this time. That would be great. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. You all had the minutes of the executive session in envelope at your position this evening. I entertain a motion for their approval.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the minutes of the executive session named the fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the minutes of the Board of Aldermen, the work session June 1st of 2020. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve session.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as read. And then the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1st of 2020. I look for a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes also stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items. The first thing we have is Council Bill 24.
Council Bill 024, an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri certifying the results of municipal election held June 2nd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We want to welcome our returning board members, and we would now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Okay.
I'm sorry. Who was the second? Okay. A motion from Alderman Miller with a second from Alderman Davidson. Oh, sorry. Dickerson. A roll call, please. Alderman Davidson.
Approve.
Alderman Reese.
Approve.
Aye. Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
And Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill 024, an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri certifying the results of municipal election held June 2nd, 2020.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 24 becomes ordinance 3498. And now the city clerk will administer the oath of office to each of the four returning Aldermen. If you want to, you want to call the bunch in front? Thank you.
Alderman Zaring. Alderman Reese. Alderman Dickerson. Alderman Turner. Forward.
You are asked. And what you have to meet stating your name. I.
Aye.
Aye.
Reese.
David Dickerson.
I solemnly affirm.
I solemnly affirm.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of Alderman.
Prescribed for the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Harrisonville.
Of the city of Harrisonville.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That consists of the fourth class.
That consists of the fourth class.
And the ordinances of the city of Harrisonville.
And the ordinances of the city of Harrisonville.
And that I will faithfully redeem myself in the office.
I will faithfully redeem myself in the office.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the second day of June 2020.
The second day of June 2020.
And congratulations, sir. I'm shooting again. Congratulations, everyone. The next item on our agenda is the Communities for All Ages. And I believe Mr. Deal is going to introduce our presenter for the evening.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor Bowman and members of board. You have in front of you the packet on the Communities for All Ages. This program helps communities to build on their strengths and serve the needs of all ages as communities develop into the future. This program is in several other cities throughout the Kansas City metro area, like Blue Springs, Brookley, or Gladstone, or Kansas City, or many more. I appreciate City Administrator Rataf asking me to take the lead on this program. And coming to us this evening by Zoom is Kathy Boyer Shisaw. And she's from the Mid-America Regional Council that heads up this program. And she will provide an overview of the program, answer any questions as we go along and at the end. And so without further ado, Mayor, you may need to let her know it's her time.
Kathy, we're ready for you.
Great. Thank you. And I'm trying to make these, my slides move forward. And it's not working. So I'm not sure what I should do. Sorry about this because it was working just a little bit ago. Can, is there someone on here and they could move these forward?
Thank Kathy. I'm going to close your screen share or see if I can move it. See if I can.
Okay. I think I'm doing it a different way. So thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the Communities for All Ages program. And I believe that everyone has the notice pages of this PowerPoint, so hopefully that will help to follow that along. The first several slides are really setting the stage for the demographic shift of the age and of the boomers. And then we'll talk a little bit about what this means for communities and then the Communities for All Ages recognition program that Chris mentioned. So this first slide with the really pretty birthday cake basically just sets the initial stage. And this is AARP research that was at the beginning of 2010. The first boomer started to turn 65 in 2011. And by 2030, every day, 10,000 boomers are turning 65. So that's a pretty compelling statistic. This next slide shows sort of the boomers, Generation X and millennials. That this really isn't just a program or a situation where the boomers are aging and once they're gone, we'll just sort of return to normal. But really, you're seeing on this slide that the numbers for both Gen X and millennials are larger and millennials actually outnumber the boomers by quite a significant percentage. So as we look at transforming our cities in a way that will accommodate boomers as they age, they're living longer, they're healthier. They're wanting different things out of cities than typically in the past. Millennials are going to want the same thing. So we're really imagining communities that will have a greater percentage of older adults, really from now on. So this is a slide that shows Missouri's senior population in comparison 2010 to 2030. And probably the big thing to remember about this slide or to notice about this slide are those counties that are in yellow or gold. However, you see this. These are counties that will have 25% or greater of their population that will be 65 and older. But all of the counties are showing a shift of color. So our nine-county metro data and Cass County is highlighted. All of our counties, all nine of them, are showing a significant increase of percentage change of folks. And this is actually this slide 65-plus. But you'll see that Cass County is showing almost 110% increase. So the, our metro area population is becoming more and more a community or a region of all ages where all groups are represented more equally. And these next two slides, it's a visual that shows that even more closely. This is the 1990 where it's more of a traditional pyramid, age pyramid, where it's sort of the pick and the pie found in the middle. But as you move up toward the top, there are less percentage of folks that are of the older ages. And then this one shows it's moving really more toward the stovepipe, really more indicative of a region or a community of all ages. And then this next slide is Harrisonville's population, a 14-year comparison of 2010 to 2024. This is the most recent American community survey data that our research department has pulled together. So the green line are the, what's trending. And you can see that you're having an uptick of the millennials. But also you can see that those up to age 80 and then there's a decline after 80. But it's, it's a pretty dramatic graphic that shows Harrisonville. So beginning, we started off with the nation and ending now with Harrisonville. But all of this shows that we are seeing a greater percentage of folks that are going to be older. And so when this program started, we asked a question. This program was started in partnership with the suburbs coalition. What does this mean for cities now that we know that there are going to be far more older adults as a percentage of the population? And it really means that it impacts all areas of the city. And this line just shows just a few of the departments. So along with the first suburbs coalition, we developed a recognition program to help cities provide a structured way to look at the policies and practices in line of having a population that would be more folks by percentage that are age 65-plus. But if you've heard of the program 8 to 80, it is a program very similar to this that shows what can put into place policies and practices for those that are age 80. They're also good for those age 8. So our recognition program has three levels, and we'll go into those a little bit further. But there's, the first is the awareness, which is the bronze level, which is the level that Harrisonville would be beginning. The second is the assessment. And then the third is implementation where a city applies an age lens to one of, a major city plan that your city could choose to be the part for them. So we have a checklist that has six topics. These are topics that are indicative of any age-friendly community program model that might be out there. AARP has a local community program. These topics would be included in that. There are a number of age-friendly community programs out there. And the second level is silver level. And you have a copy of the checklist in your packet. First, we don't have time to go through. But I can just know that that document, the checklist, is the fundamental assistance for the silver level where the city looks through and identifies a self-assessment for sample policies and practices for each of those six areas. So I wanted to let you know what the company that you would be meeting within the region. These are listing the cities that have achieved the bronze and those that are in the process of achieving the bronze and the silver and the gold. And you'll notice that most of these are on the Missouri side. So the bronze level, this is characterized by raising awareness. This program was developed out of a recognition of the policy adoption model where if you're moving toward wanting policy to be adopted, the first step is to raise awareness and provide education on a particular issue. So there are a number of activities that each city must achieve to earn the bronze level. And these are really characterized by educational activities. It may also include, and I think that you all may be looking to do a resident survey. But there are a variety of presentations. Last week, we had a presentation to the park board, a presentation tonight to the Board of Aldermen. We have scheduled a department head presentation. And I believe that Chris has a presentation lined up with the Robert Club where Frank Link is going to do the presentation on a study that is included in their package, the economic impact analysis of the Kansas City region's 65-plus population and possibly the resident survey and other groups that the city feels would be helpful to have a presentation on, similar to the presentation tonight. So those are the bronze level activities. And also does require the city to, the city's governing body to adopt a resolution in support of the program. The silver level is conducting a self-assessment of the Communities for All Ages checklist that was referenced just a few minutes ago. And then the gold level is applying an age lens to a major city plan. And so next steps is to identify leadership, which Chris has, I'd like to think he didn't drop the short strong. He's been wonderful to work with and seems like he knows everyone in Harrisonville. So he'll be shuffling this program through and working with groups in Harrisonville. And then this shows also the variety of, or the different presentations that we have scheduled, that develop and implement the whole plan for all three levels. We have a couple of optional activities that are available for recognition cities that meet every other month. And then we have a professional network which has a variety of workshops then with topics that are indicative of age-friendly community work. I wanted to share with you about those cities that have achieved the gold level, the kinds of major city plans that they apply the age lens to. So at least some and really more develop unique Communities for All Ages master plans where specifically they use the checklist and the self-assessments kind of the foundation for developing their plan. The Gladstone, Independence, and Carney, and actually Excelsior Springs is planning to apply the age lenses as they've updated their common or their strategic plan. And then Mission and Roanoke Park have applied the age lenses as they updated their parts plan. North has a city is in the process of moving toward gold level, and they're applying an age lens to their updated pipe master plan. So these are just a couple examples of what we see and observe in cities that have gone through this process. Most of the city's role in emergency preparedness activities has been elevated and a promotion of their resources was available to assist with emergency preparedness for the city. Codes revision and enhancement on accessory drawing units, universal design, comprehensive review of existing city codes with an intent to apply an age lens when it's appropriate. Cities are looking at outdoor spaces in a different way, particularly with applying universal design to outdoor spaces when that's appropriate. And in every city that goes through this or participates in this program, there are enhanced discussion and actions taken on non-traditional city services such as social isolation, the age master program, and community partnerships. As cities go through the self-assessment, as you all know, cities aren't responsible for everything that occurs in the city. So the self-assessment really allows cities to consider partners in the community that you could work with to help achieve some of the, or to look at some of the actions and policies that are included in those. Most cities, as they go through the self-assessment, I should say, to realize that you're already doing a good part of this work. And you won't be surprised as you go through the self-assessment phase that many of those that you're feeling and that there's documentation and evidence that you're already doing a really good job with many of these. And it may just be that an age lens trend hasn't been applied with the prevalence of knowing just how many residents that will be aging in your community that are, that are living to be, the average age now is getting by creeping up to 90. Many are staying active and what this means for the city. So I think, and I hope that I got through this within the time that was allotted. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So here's the process. So our process, our process is a little bit difficult tonight because of the layout. We have two microphones. So I'm going to pass this microphone down this side of the room. And if you have questions for Kathy about this program, this would be a good time to ask her. So I'm going to send this. Any questions from this side? Okay. Kathy, thank you. There are no questions from the board this evening, but we certainly appreciate the presentation. And Chris, I'll turn it back to you.
All right.
I look forward to working with everyone in Harrisonville during this project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here.
I just wanted to add real quick that the park board, as Kathy mentioned, reviewed this last week and are excited about moving forward, especially as many of you know, in a couple of years, this community center will be paid off. And the sports complex is one of the things that park board is excited about. When you look at a master plan development, you look at including all ages in regard to development of linear trail connection opportunities you have with, within a city, not just for park communities, but many communities. So park board is excited about this. And our next step is going to be after that, as you stated, to get it to the department heads. And then after the department heads, we'll be looking at community survey and more involvement to let people know more about the program. So we're excited about it and thank you for the opportunity and listening for us this evening.
Does anyone have questions for Chris on the board? Okay. Well, Administrator Rataf, I think you made a good selection in selecting Director Deal to take the lead on this project. And Director Deal, I commend you for the work that you've done. I think that it will be very interesting, you know, as we work toward growing our city, to have it be an age-friendly city for the entire population. So I really appreciate the information. I look forward to what we learn from it. So at this point, Chris and Kathy and Mark are just looking for a resolution from the board just to document our support of moving forward with the program. So we'll move on then to Council Bill 25.
Council Bill 25, KC Communities Resolution.
Thank you. Are you looking for a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Zaring. All in favor of approving Council Bill 25?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Then Council Bill 25 becomes Resolution 014. We have a special event permit, actually a couple of them, two per.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Board of Aldermen. I report you tonight is a couple of special event permits. The first one is from life issues. The Ministry of Parkland Baptist Fellowship. They are proposing to do a 4.4-mile walk from the Justice Center to the church. This is the eighth year they've done this. We've had no issues in the past. They've always done it Labor Day weekend, but then again, they're requesting to do it Friday night of Labor Day weekend, which is obviously a very busy traffic pattern, time force with late night. They won't be on the main highway. They'll be off to the side. So that would really be my own concern with that. We've worked with them in the past with this event, providing them safety vests and things like that. This is a fundraiser for their life issues addiction recovery program. The House is recommending approval. Entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board? I just see a lot of shaking of heads. So I'm going to assume that there are no questions. I would entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of approving the special event permit for life issues recovery?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That permit is approved. Now moving on to you.
A second event permit you have tonight is from Senior Mania. You guys are all aware of the COVID-19 and the social distancing and the requirements and guidelines for that. And so Senior Mania has come forward. There are restrictions with the upcoming graduation at the high school. It's going to be on the field. But each graduate is only allowed to have five individuals from their family attend the graduation ceremony itself. So Senior Mania is wanting to have something else up on the square where the graduates will line up down Pearl Street and they'll parade around the square twice and then they'll stop in front of their family and do a hat of us. Just something to try and make it so that more people can be involved in the graduation. You know, social distancing, obviously a concern there. They were going to invite at the time the 88 graduates that had signed up for Senior Mania, but they're not going to turn to any of the other 112 graduates away if they don't participate in the event. I'm going to bet there's probably 5,000 people up on the square. They have took the Brody's. Brody's is the only business that would be open at that time. They are in support of that. They have secured electricity as part of their request for the chamber office. The street department, since the entire square will be blocked off, will be providing all barricades. So there is some overtime for the street department. I mean, it's like three or four people, around $380 for that. My staff, the police department staff that's working the graduation for the school will then go on to city time and go on to the square and provide as needed protection up there as well. Stat is recommending approval. The applicants, I believe, are here. If you have any questions for them. And Stat's recommend approval. They promise they're going to do the best thing they can do to provide social distancing as well as sanitization. So entertain any questions.
What is the date and time of the ceremony?
It's August 26th.
Oh, June.
June. I have said that every time. June 26th. It'll be sometime after graduation. So they're thinking 8:30, 9 o'clock probably to upwards of an hour.
Any other questions from the board? I have a question. Is there any type of a need for insurance?
Insurance is being provided. Red, Sainer, and Farmer's Insurance, I think is what they have. It's going to provide that free charge for them.
I appreciate that.
An affirmation back there.
Well, ladies from Senior Mania, would you stand up and introduce yourself to the board?
Katie Johnson, Vice Speaker. Diana Mullins, President. Angie Rhodes, Secretary.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I know this has been a very unusual year for graduation. And I appreciate the creativity that your group has shown in wanting to give these graduates an opportunity to have as normal a graduation as they can. So I commend you on behalf of the city. Thank you so much. All right. Looking for approval, looking for a motion to approve the 2020 Graduate Square Walk Special Event Permit.
I make a motion to be approved.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Congratulations again. Congratulations again, ladies. All right. Moving on then to the Fourth of July fireworks display. Director Deal.
Thank you again, Mayor members of the board. The park board has unanimously approved to host the annual July Fourth Celebration of City Park, but instead of having all of the activities in the past, this is going to be a fireworks-only show. Staff will also be providing services and directions within the park, such as parking locations, bathroom location signs, and signs also recommending for social distancing. So staff will be present throughout the day. As we know, this is an enjoyable tradition for the city, and so we know that people will be coming to the park early, and so we will be there for providing services. Also, the past, we've had vendors or groups that supply refreshments, and we've been contacted by a couple of vendors to do that. This is something we offer within the city at this time, and so staff is recommending this is a good service to have for citizens who will be attending. We will have staff and volunteers to assist, as I said, with parking, and the police department will assist, as they have in the past, when the event is over, to be at major intersections and directing them as people leave. And I will answer any questions that you may have.
Can you pass the microphone down to Alderman Turner? Thank you.
The two vendors, are we starting to park them up?
Do you use the microphone, please?
The two vendors, should we start to park them up by the tennis court?
I'm thinking probably since we all have more rooms, start and out to the locations.
I see Mr. Carruthers holding up the wall back there. He's a member of the park board. Did you have any comments you want to share with the board or Alderman this evening?
I did not. I just came to see if anybody had any questions to throw a little support behind Chris, so.
I'm looking to see if there are any questions. I'm sorry, I can't see.
He says Sandy's there.
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't. Oh, there's Sandy. So sorry. Sandy, do you have any comments on behalf of the park board to share with the board, Alderman?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions then for Chris or members of the park board about this event? Okay. Then we'll move on to Council Bill 25.
Council Bill 26, July Fourth, 2020, fireworks in the park resolution.
Chief Hofer?
The only thing I really have to add to it is that following the years pass, we've always had a lot of fireworks, and the fireworks display are pretty.
Can you use the microphone?
Trying. Can you look better now?
No.
I do like this. My voice doesn't carry you really well. Better?
Oh, yeah.
It is better. Well, fireworks has done the fireworks displays for the last thirteen years that I can count. And they've always been on a very good fireworks display. They always go by the proper codes and distancing away from the spectators, et cetera. He, what the fire aspect of it is, is that he sets up the fireworks display the day of the Fourth, and we go out and check it to make sure it's up to par, what they want us to do, what we want them to do. And he changes at that time, the time before then. We will have fire in areas, call provided, and see the issues, and if they're not, and our staff recommends approval.
Chief Hofer, from a traffic perspective, do you have any concerns or any information to share with the board before we move on?
I think with the other communities that are canceling, I think this is going to be a huge event. But there's only so many cars that can fit in a park. We've done a pretty good job of limiting their directional traffic when they leave the last couple of years, and that has been, worked fairly well for us. So I think we're going to have a large crowd, but I think that when they're leaving, as long as they're patient and follow direction, we'll probably have a half hour for the park. So no major concerns. Thank you.
Alderman Miller, I know that you're the liaison to the park board, and you were on the call at their last meeting. Do you have any comments or concerns or questions to share with the board?
I don't have any concerns. I realize we're living in different times, and this is a new normal, but I think we need to get back to normal as much as we can. I think it's a great event. I think we need to move forward with it.
Okay. I think I've solicited, Alderman Milner, did you have something? I think I've solicited, Alderman Turner?
Just real quick, since it's park only, we don't have the activities. Are we, we have a set time, are we going to let them know about what time they work? Go on. So showing up.
Yes. Director Deal, you want to step forward to the podium? I know you're doing some things to alert people to the time, and you're also doing some promotions to alert them to other alternative viewing spots in the city. So you want to share that with the board?
Yes. What we're doing is letting the public know, usually we say at dusk, but it's going to be right around 9:30. And that'll be about the time that fireworks goes off. And within the park, when they come in, we're going to have a little bit more designated areas of telling them where they can park, not having as many activities. We'll help maybe a little bit more room to park and stuff like that. And of course, we're recommending, if they're in a location where they can view it from wherever they are, I know people like to go to high school, stuff like that, we'll be recommending that they do that. And so we'll have the areas well marked that say "event marking" when they come in. But for that starting time, that's going to be around 9:30. And that will be posted on our social media.
Is there any further discussion before we move forward? If not, we'll move on to Council Bill 26.
July Fourth, 2020, fireworks in the park resolution.
Sign me looking for a motion. Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Miller, and a second from who? Alderman Dorhoff? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 26 becomes Resolution 015. Alderman Committee reports. Alderman Turner, welcome back.
Thank you.
Alderman Davidson? They just don't want to pass the microphone. That's why they're saying nothing. Alderman Dickerson, welcome back. Okay. Alderman Miller?
Well, I did have a report for the park board meeting last week. We just found out, approved the fireworks show. I think that's great. We need to continue to do that regardless of the situation. Some of you probably know by now, if you've been through the park recently, the spillway on Lower Lake, Lake Luda is leaking. And we've got place of midnight in the area where it's leaking under the spillway structure. It continues to leak in another location as well. We are looking at that. Although, if you have any info, I know I've asked this several times over the last six months to you. We're trying to look at grants to get the dam replaced. Do you have any idea if we're cleaning closure on that, or still window, or?
There is opportunity that we're.
I knew we were. I just didn't know whether. Nothing yet. Okay. So anyway, we're monitoring that very closely. Also, if you've been through the park, you realize that the water level is down considerably on Lake Luda at this time. And apparently, some of the young people think this is a grand opportunity to clean the water, swim in the water, whatever. First apartment, they placed signs out there telling people, no waiting, no swimming, stay out of water. Hopefully, that will help. So we're probably going to monitor up July Fourth. Also, last week, we had another weed application done for Lake Luda to control the aquatic weed. So Lake Luda is looking pretty good, actually. It's just flowing water. On July 11th, the Department of Parks made a Phase One of the Show Me Strong Recovery Plan. As we know, tomorrow, June 16th, we're wide open statewide for all the, everything to open back up somewhat normal again in the playgrounds and all that other, all the other equipment will be available. Park Board on Tuesday reviewed the year-to-date budget, update on pool closings, and the Community for All Ages program, which is sort of about plus the July Fourth event. Community Center currently is averaging about 230 people per day. The highest attendance has been 275 in one day. There was a membership growth of twenty new members, bringing the total to 4,094. So we're still doing it very well. Dog Park surpassed a milestone just recently, in the last week or so. We are now above the $40,000 mark, and they're volunteering a very generous donation. And Alderman Reese has been raising, and she's raised over 700.
We're up to Mandel.
Up to Mandel in rum cake sales, and I'm sure she's probably still willing to make a few more if you want to buy a rum cake. And those all donations go to Dog Park. So we're moving along quite well with that. And last week, this past weekend, we had a softball tournament that hosted 24 teams of 67 girls in the age 14 and 16 range. It was predicted, and I'm sure we bypassed this, and generated $8,000 of unbudgeted revenue from Park and Rex, which is a great thing considering the current circumstances. But not only that, many of the players and families stayed at Comfort Inn. I'm sure they stayed at some of the other hotels. They ate in our local restaurants, Walmart, and all the different things. So the city did have been greatly by this, and it was estimated that this particular tournament had about 1,000 people in attendance. So this is a real boost for Park and Rex and this Harrisonville. And that will conclude my information for the session.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the microphone down this way and start with Alderman Reese. And welcome back to you.
Thank you. Yes, we have gone to $40,000, a little over that now. And rum cake sales are up over $1,000 now. So that's a lot of rum cakes she does. And my only comment about the rum cakes is I'm going to do it for about two more weeks. So if anybody wants a rum cake, get that ordered, because after two weeks, there is not a cake going through my kitchen. So I'm real excited about that. The enthusiasm of the community to help with Dog Park has absolutely been overwhelmed, and I have won so much. She charged $20 for a cake, and they hand me a check for a hundred. So these people have been, I mean, people have been wonderful. That makes sense. I had a citizen that called me about some problems in his neighborhood, having to do with speeding and some other things. And I was able to talk to Mr. Ratliff about that. I sent an email to him. That matter was taken care of immediately. I had another one that had to do with speeding, and I spoke with Chief Hofer, and that too. And I just need to say that our personnel and our city work so carefully with our citizens. I don't think anyone knows how lucky they are. Thank you, guys.
I am just so excited about the Fourth of July. I think the youth of Harrisonville are going to be thrilled to have a reason to be able to get out of their houses and meet up with their friends. I think it's, like I said, it's high time that we come out of hibernation, and that'll be very exciting. I wanted to follow up with Judy. I also had a citizen complain, which I passed on to Brad, and he passed on to Chris and his department. And after a few days of back and forth and back and forth conversations, she got back to me and wanted to be sure that we mentioned how proud she is of how our staff steps up when they're asked and follows through and does all that. So I just wanted to give you guys kudos, because the citizens truly appreciate. You know, I know you hear a lot of the bad things, but they also truly appreciate the efforts that you put forth in the follow-through. So thank you, guys.
Alderman Dorhoff?
I just want to thank the electric department for resolving all our power issues yesterday. They did a great job. So I think everybody's got power back home, so good job.
And Alderman's there.
So he just stole my thunder, because I was going to thank them as well. And I tell you, everybody that was involved in that, I mean, it took maybe two and a half hours, I think. It seemed like it was a pretty major situation there, because it was, a lot of the town was out of electricity. So again, I'm going to jump on there and tell everyone involved in that, thanks for getting in that and getting that fixed as quick as possible. I'll tell you, the other thing that I noticed is the Facebook page. Everybody's going to the Facebook page when something like that happens, and they're communicating and where the outages are, all those types of things. So, and that was happening quick. So we appreciate that being out there. That's where people can go pretty much immediately. I think they're going to the Facebook page. I think a lot of them are still calling in, but a lot of them still go to the Facebook page to get that information. So that was great. Thanks for that. Also, you know, I want to give thanks to the parks committee and board. You guys got a busy time of year with a whole lot of things happening, to throw wires or wrenches into whatever you're doing. So everybody that's been involved in that, especially over the last probably month, I think, it's probably been a little bit overwhelming for them and had to make some hard decisions on that. So we appreciate what you guys are doing as well.
I just saw Park Board President Kathy Ferris step in also. And I just want to say on behalf of this board, you heard Alderman Zaring say it so well. You know, you guys have made some very difficult decisions this summer, and we commend you for your love of the parks and the way that you discussed and finally came to decisions about the pool and the fireworks display. So I commend Sandy and Kathy and Brent, and I ask you to share, Mr. Deal, if you would pass that on to the remainder of the board, that would be great. I'm going to pass this microphone on to City Administrator Ratliff.
Okay. The opening position of the Public Works Director slash City Engineer closed Friday. We'll be reviewing resumes, received several resumes for the position. And we have put together a team of employees that'll be reviewing those and hopefully moving as quick as possible on that. The Electrical Superintendent will be closing this Friday. We've already received quite a few applications as well for that position. Coast Department is working to update a lot of our building permit and our fees. And we've been meeting, I know the mayor and I met with the builders, it's been almost two months ago now. Everything got COVID. And we, Chris is reaching out to them now to set up another meeting with some recommendations that staff's put together to get their input. And our hope is to have next month bring you all some of this information for a work session. I would just tell you that a lot of the things that we're working on this next couple of months, your work sessions are going to be long, so you might plan for that, because there's a lot of different things that we'll be bringing to the board to review. I didn't hear you groan too much, but I seen some of you groan a little bit. The staff submitted our first COVID response to the counting on reimbursements over $76,000. Harrisonville was the first city in Cass County to submit. So we are reviewing questions that come in from the County Treasurer on that. What we're doing now is, as staff put together, as part of this, these monies that are available, there are some things that we have to do, such as in the discussion we're having here tonight. If we're going to have another outbreak and we have to have meetings here, we need to have more than two or three microphones. And there's a lot of technology that Jeremy's very heavily involved with, with the server system, and a lot of the things that. system, and a lot of the things to provide that opportunity, and so, uh, we see those as COVID opportunity, uh, reimbursement, uh, because the way that, that it's been outlined is just not the current cost, but is there a continual outbreak, or if we continue to try to do, uh, the social distancing, the incurring costs that would be a result of that. So we'll continue to, uh, bring in additional things for that, such as in a part of those expenses, as you know, the, the City Hall had one, uh, working door that every staff member and every, uh, person in the public used on that one frame door to come in, uh, to the facility. We actually got the other, uh, back door of the alley, uh, fixed and it's carded, uh, the door on the office side is getting ready to be replaced and have a card access system into it as well. As you all have probably seen on social media, um, Randy had the, uh, larger board installed in the outside, so for every meeting, uh, that every board and every commission is having, uh, anyone from the public can be able to come up outside the building and see it. We're having electrician come in and put a light on it, so that way, especially when you get in the winter months, uh, when the days are shorter, people at any time, or if they work the, the late shift, they're able to come up, uh, when it's dark and be able to see, uh, any of that. With that, we were hoping that they could come to this meeting and give an update on the sales tax, but the state has also been in a COVID operation, so we haven't got all of the information from the state yet. Uh, we've gotten some of the numbers that have come in, but we don't have any of the additional numbers that we need to be able to give you all the full information. And so we're hoping by this next meeting in July, they have plans to be here to give you all an update, uh, on those numbers, and we're really hopeful that because of some of the concern about toilet paper and those kind of things, that it will help offset in some of the areas and that we won't see such a, a hard hit. On the national level, you've been seeing that the federal area has been talking about their wanting and thinking it's going to be a stronger beat, uh, than what they anticipated, and we're, uh, we're hoping that they're correct. The electrification that was brought up, I sent you all a report, uh, on that via email. Uh, there's additional things that we're going to do and that you're going to see. I will tell you, as much as you all thought it went well, the mayor and I are about to pull our hair out in the process of all of that, because there's a lot of technology that we are not utilizing that we're going to utilize, uh, such as in we have an input system, and there's some integrated ways, instead of Daniel sending out a blast, uh, we can actually be more pinpointive and actually do phone calls, and it's automated phone calls to people, updating, I know those on Pearl Street, there was only three or four houses that got affected on the tail end of, uh, that outage yesterday, but according to the social media, the Electric Department went home, and so they were contacting the mayor, who then the mayor contacts me, and then I guide out from them, and then I contact the mayor, and then the mayor contacted them, so, uh, we were burning up, uh, the, the phone lines yesterday. But the, there's a lot more effective way to do that with the technology opportunity, and so you're going to see a lot of changes in the Utility Department, especially for watering, assuming electric, and how we're getting information out, uh, to residents because communication is key and making sure that people know what's going on. Um, the Stormwater Open House is still planned for June 24th at 6:00 PM, uh, here at this location, here at the Community Center. Uh, we did get, uh, verified from the Corps that they have been given the green light to be able to be here presently. Uh, the, the only concern we're having right now was with SEMA and them being here, but if they don't, we think between Ted and I and the information we know about it and getting the packet of information from them, that we should be able to answer a lot of the questions, uh, that residents might have on, on that. Really, what we're wanting to see on the, the SEMA theme is the, uh, opportunity of repetitive loss buyouts, uh, that the federal government offers and, and getting that information to the residents. The, uh, discussion, one that someone had brought up at the last meeting about the Walmart Distribution Center, this is the year that those, um, Chapter 100s, uh, do come off, and as a result of that, uh, the Walmart, uh, bond attorneys have been in contact with our Central City Attorney's Office to make sure that we, uh, retire those bonds this year. Jim's been in, uh, contact with them about equipment that they were looking at to reinvest out into the, um, Distribution Center that wouldn't require, uh, Chapter 100s, it would just be more normal state tax credits that are available, and Jim is conversing with them about those, uh, opportunities that are there. Uh, Jim's also been, uh, reaching out to different businesses, and you've seen some of those businesses listed, uh, on that weekly report, but as he's been doing that, is also going to be meeting and been meeting with, uh, being in the Chamber of Commerce and to see how we can get additional information out to the businesses, uh, to be able to make sure we can help them navigate, uh, through a lot of, uh, this COVID issue. And so we continue to see that move forward. The sewer study, we have a sewer study being, being completed by, uh, Burns &amp; McDonald, and they are planning to be, uh, doing a presentation here in August, uh, to give you an update on the system and different, uh, plans for the wastewater treatment facility, uh, as well as one of the places down there at the, uh, Walmart Distribution Center is the old packing plant, and as you all know, it's got pretty in bad shape, and the plans that we have, um, for that as well. Then we received a, uh, $30,000 grant for the airport, uh, we are trying and getting bids, uh, through the feds, and it was non-matching, which was good too. And, uh, as a result, there, I guess for several years, the lights out at the airport hadn't been working, and, which is a little scary, and, uh, so the hope is that, uh, we will get bids in to be able to update the light system out there. Another opportunity that actually we've been reached out to, uh, by MoDOT, as well as, uh, some of the Federal Aviation, where there may be some opportunity for us, uh, to get a large size grant for the airport with only a 5.5% match, uh, and so that's a, uh, awesome opportunity, um, that we're, we're hoping to capitalize on. As I told you in a lot of meetings before with the COVID issue and the CARE Act and a lot of the information and the money that the federal government's been pumping into a lot of those agencies, we're trying to make sure that we capitalize anywhere we can, and so staff's been really watching, uh, on any of those opportunities. Cedarhurst is continuing to move forward, uh, they're going to be, uh, on Thursday night, June 19th, they'll be at the, uh, planning a zoning for the final plaque, uh, that's coming up on that, and there's, uh, staff has been, uh, meeting and has agreements on two properties, uh, that are considered dangerous building cases, uh, one at 308, 301, uh, Washington, the site's been cleaned up and will begin, and, uh, probate, uh, should be within the next 30 days, and demolition will begin immediately following, uh, the probate, and the family has, uh, got an attorney that's working on the probate case, and the contractor's already been lined up, uh, 706 Green, new owner has gained control of the property, and will be gutting and rehabbing the home and the site. And then the medical marijuana dispensary has been applied for, uh, and we received a building permit at 1408, uh, North Street, Route 20, uh, 291, which is the old, uh, gas station north of Quiktrick right there. And so, uh, they're working with staff to, um, update the code of the building, and it's going to probably be, uh, moving forward, so if you see some activity there, uh, that's going on with that. I give kudos to Chris and, and the guys for really going after these dangerous buildings and trying to get those remedied without the city having to do it, they're trying to work with people to get those things accomplished. We are looking at these, um, stages, uh, we talked about, uh, Lake Luna, uh, Alderman Miller talked about that, one of the things Ted's been, uh, reviewing that, and actually we looked at a 2010, uh, report that come out on that, and what we're trying to do is not do with the whole master plan for that.
Right.
But pull out the data from that information. We had an engineer onsite, um, I know that there were some, uh, people that were concerned about an intimate breach, uh, but the engineers are not concerned that there is an intimate breach. If there was an intimate breach, we would be enacting an emergency action plan, and you would see a lot of things moving really quick if we thought there was a, uh, an intimate breach. And so as I echo what Alderman Miller says, it's being reviewed, uh, we're trying to come up with a, a good plan to fix it, but not just patch it, but come up with a plan that as we move forward with any type of phase system, that is something we can add to it and not, if, I have a big pet peeve about doing something, then later, two, three, four years down the line, we rip it out and do something else, that drives citizens crazy, and, and so we're wanting to make sure that whatever we do, um, we do it in that kind of manner, so, um, we are going to probably put some messaging out, Daniel and I talked about that, about doing that tomorrow, Ted will be in tomorrow, and we're going to do, um, some messaging out to the citizens to reassure them, uh, on that as well. And then, as you know, the governor has, has changed the plan, or had to change the stage, uh, to, uh, I think they call it two, but it's just open. And, uh, so we will be moving as a city from stage three, uh, down to stage one, unless the board objects, uh, to any of those stages, and I just want to repeat them to you to make sure, before I put that out, that you don't have any big concerns with that. We'll continue in stage one, as employees should keep track, uh, of all the developments within the region and nationally, uh, if anything would emerge, implement strategies, uh, to limit and to spread to employees, and continue to work, uh, with PPE, which will be our first responders, will still be utilizing, uh, PPE. And we are going to also do with COVID money, try to have a stop call, uh, to be able to be ready for if we would have a resurgency, uh, evaluate our resources and, and explore and provide, uh, continue with sanitization, extra sanitization, extra, uh, sanitizers at places throughout the, uh, facilities. We're going to outline and suspend different type of travel for employees, uh, based on the City Administrator, uh, uh, reports. There are some trainings and conferences that are probably never going to open up, uh, they're just not going to happen this year, uh, but there are some that are going to be probably more regional or state, and I think, you know, as long as they're going to have them, that the employees that we would normally have go to those, uh, should be able to go to those. We're going to increase, uh, facility cleans and then continue to follow, uh, CDC's, uh, guidelines on social distancing and, uh, workplace, trying to keep our people safe in that manner. I can tell you that over the past weekend, if you want to see, I already showed the mayor pictures, uh, we've been going in and doing some sanitization through the old City Hall, uh, one of them is the floors, you would be amazed what different color the floors are, uh, once they get really scrubbed, uh, damp really good. I told the mayor, so my mother always said, "It was no shame to be bored, but there's no reason to be dirty," and, uh, so there'll be a lot of, of that, so is there any concerns with going down to that stage one? That the board has? I didn't want to send that out, and you all have, we'll start with that. Okay, then we'll move forward with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
You had the May 2020 Municipal Court Report in your packet. Um, we'll go on to questions from the media. Dennis, no questions. Do you want to tell us about your open house, perhaps?
Um, everyone's invited, it will be a week from Thursday, the 25th, um, we're having an open house, I, I assume everyone knows, we have new offices, and we're on West Wall Street, 205 West Wall, and we will be having an open house on the 25th, 5 to 7, and we're going to feature, uh, homemade style ice cream from Birds' Bacon, Scott and Nate. We'll be bringing it up, so if you'd like everybody to come by and see our offices and, uh, stay on.
So it was June 25th at around 5:00 or 6:00 PM.
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00, and Birds' Bacon and homemade ice cream, so count me in. I think Chief Ofer has something to say, go ahead.
I apologize, I was just informed that the grain out date for graduation is June 27, so if they get rained out on the June 26th, uh, does anybody have a problem moving the event on the square to the 27th?
Everybody's okay with that? Okay, I think so, thank you. I just wanted to add that I have, uh, had the opportunity, you know, we, we work real closely with the Missouri Municipal League, and they provide a lot of training for us. I was honored to be part of the Economic Development Policy Committee with the MML and attended a conference establishing, uh, or proposing policies for economic development and human resources for MML. Have a, a thank you note from Dee Shelton that I want to share with you, I just received this this evening. Most of you know that Dee has retired after 37 years of employment with the city, and she says, "Mayor Bowman, City Council, and City Employees, just a word of thanks for the $100 gift certificate to Suburban Lawn and Garden, what a generous gift, and I will make sure to get something, a tree or a yard ornament to remember you all by. Thank you too for the reception at City Hall, everything was wonderful, and under the circumstances with COVID-19, it went well. I just wish more of our employees could have been there, but understand completely. Saying goodbye is never easy, so in some ways, this actually helped, keeping it to my City Hall family. Thank you again for everything, Dee Shelton." Uh, most of you know that we are going to be planning a larger reception for her later in the year, uh, we had to limit it just because of the occupancy limitations with COVID-19, but, um, she, uh, is, is a much loved and much appreciated employee. All right, um, we're moving on in Phase 2, so restrictions have been lifted by the governor, we'll be following his recommendations, and ideally, we will move back to City Hall for our next meeting, so that's where we will see you all in July, is at City Hall. So, no further business or discussion from the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Zering. Um, all in favor of adjourned? Anybody want to stay here? Thank you, we're adjourned, goodnight, ladies and gentlemen.